Split proportionally based on the percentages that you would stand to gain. So in a case like that, we're slightly under 1 percent. If the legal fees, and it's Wyserota's the firm they'll be handling it. If they, let's, for example, if the legal fees were $300,000, we'd be on the hook potentially, should we decide to opt in for 3 percent or $3,000, which is certainly not a terrible investment on our part to try to increase our return. The concern that we had last week was that that number, the cost of that lawsuit, would be divided up among the municipalities who participate. So I didn't want to bring you a recommendation to jump into that. I wanted to sit back, and you see my email with the Mayor Sunrise. From our standpoint, because we're such a small portion of that, that we wanted to see the, some of the other big horses get in that race, and so that we could recognize and going confidently recognizing that our financial cost, our risk in a case like that would be small enough that it, that would be manageable for us. So the inter-local agreement expires the beginning of July. They're looking for people to jump in as quickly as possible. This is something that I would bring back with more information for you to make a determination at the next meeting in July, but I wanted to give you a heads up on it and let you know. And I did say before that there's been some other accounting. Those sheets that came out that I passed along to you were current today, Marty, till 2:00, 3:00 o'clock, 4:00 o'clock? We got a call from the county, and they, as they continue to do creative accounting, they've revisited those numbers, and they're saying, now, from our standpoint, I would say to you that the assets of the Resource Recovery Board need to be split based upon the 2012 numbers, tonnage, because that's, the most recent numbers, that's how the split should be done. Apparently, when they sent their information off to the County Commission to be considered, they used 2011 numbers. Our tonnage, which had been under-reported, is significantly lower. So the new document, because we, we had already received a check from them today, but they called to let us know they stopped payment on that, and they're gonna be issuing a new check, and, sorry if you pass that down. They're now telling us our share, actually, that's the same sheet, but you'll see the note at the bottom, drops to, from $225,000 to $126,000. Based on their accounting, we're losing $100,000.
Can't we appeal it?
Because, well, obviously, we want to be able to consider all our legal options as far as, because, because we really have two different things that we're gonna need to consider here. One is, do we want to participate in that other suit along with the other municipalities? And there's certainly arguably reason to do that, but do we have a case on our own for the county approving distribution of these assets based on 2011 numbers, not 2012? So we've, you know, we've certainly got some work to do, and certainly a lot to discuss.
So that cuts the $3,000 participation into 1,500.
Well, based on the 2011 numbers, yes, it would.
Okay, so it sounds like a legal question first, and second, what a cost is, but yeah.
So we've, we've got a lot of work to do. I know, you know, the mayor's on the line now, if he may want to jump in on, on something I said, but, you know, he and I attended the meeting along with Keith. We discussed it a little bit afterwards, and it's, it's just gonna be an interesting challenge to get our share out of this, but I think we can get there.
Mayor, did you want to add anything, any comments to what Andy had mentioned? All right, may have, may have lost the mayor. Yeah. I will tell you that just from my standpoint, I have a, I would definitely want to see the numbers behind the numbers before I cash that check for 126,000, because how, from one year, that could be that dramatic a difference is just, does not seem possible.
It's based on trash collection numbers, and our numbers were under-reported. And, and actually, Marty put the county on notice of that last year, but for whatever reason, that didn't get corrected. So, you know, we've got-
Under-reported by, say, 40 percent?
I would actually ask Marty to talk to that a little bit.
Forty percent?
He's a little more knowledgeable than I am on that.
That's about what it dropped.
That is correct, what the town administrator indicated. We actually went from a peak year in '12, which is the check that they issued stop payment to one of the lowest collection years in 2011. So that could be a side issue, as the town administrator mentioned, to dispute the year of methodology for this distribution.
This is, this is based on not one, I mean, you're saying that that number is based on one year's actuals. What they're saying is one year's actuals, but this is really based on a history of, over the history of the Resource Board. How long has that been around?
Well, it's been around for a long time, early-
So how could they possibly base it on one year's collection?
Well, exactly. The, we'll need to research how they determined one year rather than average over multiple years. That is correct. We need to look into that. The fact is, in the earlier years, it's obvious the tonnage was there, it was just misidentified to other municipalities. So it's not that it didn't get unpaid, it was just paid by other municipalities.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Andy? You're not done yet.
I've got plenty more. But that, that is it for that topic. There was some discussion earlier about Luke's, I'm certainly aware of that, and perhaps that might be something that would be good for us to bring back as a discussion item at the July 11th meeting, where, for each of you all, with certainly some additional information, we can talk about that a little bit further. I think that would be a positive for us as well.
That'd be great.
Okay. I will do that. And the other, one other thing I wanted to touch on was bulk. We're certainly aware of those issues. You know, Sandy's taking those calls now, she's logging them, she is keeping a history of that. I'll say that we've tried to be nice with, with SWS, and they have, they've said the right things, and they've tried to be responsive, but each time we have an issue on a, on a bulk week, I'd like to think it's behind us, and, and each time, another couple of weeks goes by, and it's bulk collection time again, and we're dealing with the same issues and the same complaints. And I'll tell you that from my standpoint, it is absolutely unacceptable. There, I know they're using the same, same contractor, same subcontractor that Waste Management was using, so I don't understand the difference, and rather than, than continue to try to work this out with the low-level people, who may mean well, but may not have the, the resources or the authority to bring the resources to bear that we need here, I just actually spoke to Sandy earlier and said, you know, as soon as I get back from vacation, I want to bring those people in here, I want, I want to get their, their highest level people, and, you know, I certainly told her who those people were. I want to bring them in, because I want to sit down with them, and they need to hear from me, and, you know, speaking certainly on behalf of the town, that what we've got now is unacceptable, and that needs to change. So it is something that we are aware of, and, you know, we tried to be nice, it didn't work, we'll do what we need to do to get where we need to be.
If you feel you need, I think our input or our help, in my case, I'd say, feel free to send me their phone number, and then mine, and I'll gladly back up the phone call with you.
Well, I'll certainly let you know-
And I think everybody up here probably would feel that.
You know, there's enough headaches that come with this job, I don't need extra ones, and, and so we're gonna get that one taken care of. I think that covers the incidental and extra things I had. I do have a couple of other things I have for you. One that's, that's certainly in, in the agenda, the first one, the easier one, is the craft fair, which would be coming up in October. It is something that we budget for every year, it's about $1,500 that we put in. The registrations that come in help to offset that, and certainly one of the first things I attended when I, when I started with the town last year, I think it's a great event, and I certainly like a consensus of support from all of you to go forward with that again for this year.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Let me push that aside, I'm gonna push a couple of things aside and reload, if I may.
Vice Mayor, if I could throw one curveball at Andy.
Sure.
Is there an update on 75 and Griffin and the parking right?
There, there is absolutely nothing new. We've been assured that that's been removed from the plan, but it is something that we'll continue to keep an eye on going forward.
Yeah, 'cause I don't look forward to going to jail, but I will have to.
Okay, the next item on, on the agenda is, is the Cody study, and so, you know, I want to talk to you about that. During the budget process last year, I asked you all to allocate some funds for a personnel study, to look at our benefits and our compensation for our employees. You all did that, and, and I told you at that point that when that would be completed, I was gonna come back to you and ask you for some additional funds. I can tell you that the result, the results are in. They've compared us to, you know, a significant number of other municipalities in South Florida, and we are, we are lagging in many areas. There are some things we might be able to do something about, some things we can't, but one thing I do want to say for the record here, as, as we talk about employee compensation, salaries, benefits, there's nothing in the study, there is nothing in any of the recommendations that I have for you that benefits me. This is about the rest of the staff, it's not about administration, so I just want to be clear that, that this is separate from myself. The folks from Cody made several different recommendations, and I think there's, I think A through D on different recommendations that came in from them, in an effort to be, I'll say, more sensitive to our financial situation here, and realistic on what, where we can improve and still be reasonable. I've, I've discussed with you all some recommendations, a little bit scaled back from that. The recommendations that I have for you, the, the things that I would like to, to see us do, fall within my authority. They are within my authority as administrator, however, they also need to be budgeted. And, you know, I'd suggest to you that the discussion we're having tonight is really the, it's, it's about checks and balances, this is how the system is supposed to work. Now, the cost of, of what I'm suggesting to you must be provided for, and, and, you know, I found a source to do that without dipping into reserves, without depleting anything else. We had a code contract for code services with Stan Morris when he was here. When Stan left, that contract was renegotiated with Robert Solera, and there was a substantial decrease in the money that was allocated for contract personnel, not for town employees, but for contract personnel, recognizing the largest share of, of the code contract is, is employee personnel-related. The savings that we had on that code contract is anticipated to be about $62,000. It is fairly substantial. So the question becomes, why do we, why do we do this, why do we bring something forward like this to, to, to benefit our employees? And I'll tell you that, that employee morale matters. It matters to me, and it, and it matters to you, because it matters to our residents. That morale directly impacts their performance, and how they, how they carry out their duties. We certainly have an obligation to be fair to our employees and treat them as well as we can. We also want to be in a position where we can attract and retain qualified employees. We need to be competitive with, with other employers out there, and, and as a municipal, municipal government, we need to be cognizant of where other municipalities are, and try to be, if we, we certainly can't be, I'll say, the Cadillac, but, but we certainly need to be competitive as best we can. We're working on a performance review process, and that's something that we're, that we're very close with, with. It is something that we'll share with council before we kick that off, and that will very clearly define the performance standards that we're looking for, for our employees going forward, and, and define clearly what those, what those different performance measures are, as far as meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, or, or being truly exceptional. Now, there are, within the recommendations, I gave you several significant salary increases by percentage. The largest of those are for those who were, as you saw from the Cody survey, were significantly below the minimum for their positions. And I will tell you that many of those people, I think there were four of them, three of the four, have taken on new and additional responsibilities following the completion of the Cody study. So that wasn't even allowed for within the Cody study, but they've taken on those, those extra duties as well, and those people should be compensated for that. The recommendations that I've shared with you leave us still a little bit short of some other municipalities, as, as you could see by your review of the Cody study, but our goal is to build a professional and quality team here to continue to serve this town into the future, and these are my best professional recommendations that make financial and practical sense for our organization. And other than that, I'll certainly take all your questions.
Great. I know I've got a few comments, anybody else wanna jump in?
I do too, but I don't feel like leading off.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and lead us off then, and just say that from, from an overall standpoint, Andy, I think that you are approaching this in the proper way. I think this is, this is how it should be done. You go out, you do a study, you find out what the marketplace is, and then compare that to where we are current, and, and build the recommendations there. Reading through the recommendations from the study itself, I think you accurately portrayed that their recommendations frankly are not realistic for where we are today, where our budget is, and, and so I commend you for trying to find that middle ground. And, and really, finally, I'll say that I think that the middle ground that you found is, is a good, reasonable middle ground, and, and from a general standpoint, I agree with your recommendations. I do have a couple of questions that I did want to, did want to clear up. One is, there is this position in the chart that, for an administrative specialist, which is vacant, and I'd like to get an understanding, a couple of things. One is, from a budget standpoint, is that in the budget now where it could be filled? And so that's, like, we are not spending that money, but it has been budgeted, or would that be in addition to what we had budgeted a year ago? I'm trying to understand that position.
We're currently actually down two bodies. Jane Fury, as you know, was working with Code, has left, she will not be replaced. The other one that we've actually been working short was Lee Rickles' departure.
Okay.
So, well, that will, bringing someone in, which is already budgeted, will, will just bring us back to that headcount.
Okay, so that's not an addition, that's, that just gets us back to where we were. And then the, the only, I guess my only other question is, has to do with the start date that you're proposing, as of June 1st. Seems a little unusual to me to, to backdate something like this. I don't know if you had a specific reason for that, or, but it seems a little, a little unusual to me.
Actually, only because it's, it's taken us, I'll say, far longer to get to this point than, than I would like, and as I said before, many of those employees have taken on other, other responsibilities, other chores, that they're not being compensated for. And that was the reason I had wanted to go retroactive just at the beginning of this month.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. The study was done, and, you know, I'm a businessman, and I understand this is government, and government tends to waste money worse than anyone else. So, I mean, the IRS is in the news every single day these days, but I've gotta tell you, some of the labor markets and the places they identified, I mean, we're a small town of 13 square miles and less than 10,000 people, and you're comparing us, or it looks like for me, you know, Pepper Pines, Cooper City, Davie Sunrise, Coral Springs, North Miami Beach, Broward, Miami Dade County, you know, there's a lot bigger, to me, a lot of other big players in here that have a humongous budget, that can afford to pay the salaries that the positions probably deserve, but they're a lot, they have a lot more stuff to do there. So I've gotta tell you that I'm not thrilled with the, the way the data was collected in that regard, but on the front end, before I go further into this, let me say that you clearly have brought this forward to us in a, in a, in a proper manner, like Steve said, grateful, the right way to do it, and you have the ability to do this anyway. So I would like the public and everybody to realize that Andy's taken an avenue to bring this out, you know, to everybody, to share this, and a process and the way he's gathered the information, and it's not something he has to do, it's under his authority to do on his own. As long, and, and as he mentioned, where it comes into play is the budget, does it fit in the budget, and he has to come to us to approve the budget, so he's, he's approaching it from the right way and all those sides. So me, as a businessman, would tell you that, you know, if there's a thousand people for that job versus 100, you know, you, you have more choices, but we do have a very good staff, we're pleased with our staff, they've done a great job, they have, they wear different hats at different times and all. So, you know, I'm in agreement with part of this study, and I know he's rolled it back in the recommendations, but me personally, I hate to take on something you can't control very well, and what do we, we be related to the health insurance side of this? So I personally have a problem with participating any more than we are, which is at the 50% level related to the health insurance side, because if you jump in additionally, you can't really control that cost, and it just goes, and goes, and goes, and that just climbs and then, you know, it'll bite you later, is what I'm saying. I mean, 'cause it can still go now, but we're, we're at a level that I don't think it's gonna bite us anytime soon if we stay where we're at. So I'm gonna tell you from my aspect with your recommendations with what you want to do, I'm, I'm gonna be okay with it, provided we don't jump on board with the health insurance side of it. Jump on in.
Yeah, actually, Doug, I appreciate that comment. I meant to make a similar comment to that as well, and neglected to do so, so I agree with what you're saying. I think, in, in my thought, what I was, I'm, I'm hesitant about that too, for the same reasons, that, that, that expense is tough to predict, it's gonna go up, I have seen situations where, you know, the company contributes more, and the insurance goes up even more, and it looks like you didn't do anything, and there's no morale benefit, and it's, it's not good stuff.
Yeah, and if you turn that into a dollar value, that, that as a raise related to that expense makes you way up there.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and I'm more inclined to support the individual getting some sort of an increase on the health, and less inclined to support the dependent, to be honest with you.
Without a doubt.
Can I jump in here?
Sure.
Back up just a minute.
That's what it's about, that's what it's for.
I know, I know, let me back up, okay. You guys, both of you guys are, and I'll get to you in a minute, both of you guys are okay with the COLAs and the increases. You are okay with the recommendation for the health insurance to-
None.
75%?
No.
Keeping it at 50%?
Correct.
I, I will say for myself-
'Cause I got a mixed messenger.
Yeah. For myself, I'm, I'm, I could go with the 75% for the individual increase there, to try and assist in there. I'm, I'm less, I'm really not in support of the dependent.
Okay, and?
I'm, stay at 50.
You're staying at 50, and, and nothing on the dependent?
No.
Okay.
I'm, as far as the salary, the way he wants to do it, I'm living with that, but I didn't want to-
Okay, but the, the COLAs and the increases in position, you're okay with that?
Yeah, you know, I'm, listen, guys, I'm a whole lot different when I look at this, okay? You know, I don't want to go back to kinda my thoughts and how I do things, 'cause I'm a businessman, and this is government, and they got this information, they gather this information, so I'm not even on board with all this, where all this information came from. To me, I say you go out and say, find towns that are 10,000, you know, 10,000 people or less, and have, you know, about the same stuff, other ones even have more revenue streams, whether it be water or sewer or something else like that, income stream. So I, you know, I like more comparable to what we are, than rather than getting, they're doing the area of the industry of where we live, so.
Right. I would, I would say to that, and Doug, I ran my own business for 11 years, so I certainly struggled with this.
I'm still doing it.
Well, I understand, but I mean, you know, I earned my own check for 11 years, not depending on anybody else. So I understand that, and I had to go through these struggles from a business owner's standpoint as well, for 11 years. And, you know, I think the way the study was done is correct. What you, what you, what the study needs to do is not compare to other towns our size, 'cause that's not what we're competing against in the marketplace. What we're, we have to do a study compared to what we're competing against in the marketplace, and what we're competing against in the marketplace is other towns. If, if our staff goes to, is gonna be drawn by someplace else, they may not be drawn by a little town somewhere in the middle of Florida, they may be drawn by the exact cities and towns that are listed in this study, and that's why those were there. So, so that's, that's, that's the methodology behind the study, and I think it's accurate. So I don't have any problem with that. I, I just, I think that this study frankly, you know, I don't think the public has had the opportunity to see it, but frankly, in a lot of ways, we're, it's embarrassing, because we are so far below, I mean, it's not, it's not that we're, you know, people are below the midpoint, and we're trying to get them up to midpoint kind of a thing, it's like they're not even in the range. So, you know, so it's really, it's something that I think we need to take care of, and that's why I, you know, I support it. I think we're all up here-
That's kinda why I'm, that's kinda why I'm more or less supporting, going, not fighting it as diligently as I normally would, but I'm gonna stand hard on the insurance side, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, yeah, and I understand that too, and I, I tend to feel the same way, but I do, oh, I'll leave it there.
Let me, let me jump back in here if I could. The, in the Cody study, they had a page of recommendations, Andy. None of, where the, to increase the number of personal days, the holidays were increased, none of that is being recommended at this time?
No, not recommending any changes in those areas.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, so, that's the funeral leave, all that, that's, that's, that's not on the table here.
That's a-
Okay, good, just want to make sure that everybody understands that for the record, once they see this. So, Freddie, are you comfortable with, with the study? I mean, have you got an opinion here, or?
I'm not comfortable with it at all.
Okay.
What's your opinion?
What's your opinion?
Well, I, I-
In the mic.
I can't agree with what Steve, I can't agree with what Steve's saying, and, you know, it's hard, I know, I have no problem with what he's bringing back to me, but somebody's gotta tell me where I'm gonna get the money to do it. You know, I would be very comfortable with it if you guys want to talk about a increase in mileage, but we're gonna, we're talking about, we can't even meet our budget now, and you want to increase our budget, and the biggest problem that I see, and it's very difficult, because when you're in a little town, like, most of our people are department heads, but they're not department heads, because they're the department.
They're doing it.
So that's where the problem comes in, you know? We're comparing people, like, I was a second-line supervisor, I had 90-some people underneath me, you know, but then again, it's a situation, so it's hard, it's hard to study something like this and say what is, what is there. The only way I can say with our people is, we're doing the best we can, and if they're not satisfied with the job, I don't have any problem with them looking for one somewhere else. But right now, I don't have that much money to pay them, and I don't have the money to pay them benefits that's not there with the mileage that we're trying to live within. You know, I, I know I'm probably one of the only people on the board that's talking about it, but we've gotta bite the bullet somewhere, unless, you know, we're gonna have a little help this year because our property appraisal has went up. We're gonna have a little more money in our budget, but then again, there's a lot of other things that's gone up, that, you know, we can't overlook the two big things, and that's police and fire. So, you know, I, I, I was really disappointed in the whole study, and I really don't have an answer for them, because all I can say is, we're a small town, we gotta live within our budget, and if the people that are working here, and I'm not knocking any of them, and if they're not happy, they should look for something else. With the rate of money we've got to pay our people, we just don't have it. You know, I would, I would support it. I'm very fortunate. I know it's gonna hurt a lot of people that are in this town if we raise the mileage, but then again, you can't, you can't run a business, and you was in the business, if I never been, I was in a small business, in a nursery business, I was the only employee and my wife, so it's, but it's hard to run a business without money, and that's a situation we're having here now. We're trying to run a business, and we're trying to keep up with Pepper Pines, we're trying to keep Western, and Cooper City, and all those towns has got big budgets, and, but then you look at their mileage rate, you know? I sit on MPO, and a lady came there from a real small town, and I said, y'all got any money problems? She said, no, we don't have any money. I said, what's your mileage? Nine and a half. You know, they don't have problems, and I, that's some, that's something we gotta do. If we want to do this, we gotta figure out how we can do it, and the only way we can do it is to raise money from somewhere else.
So Freddie, what you're saying is, if we're gonna do this, we need to raise the mileage rate, bite the bullet.
Well, but I want, I want to ask the mayor for his comments, obviously, but I do think that, is he, is he not there?
He's not.
Okay, all right. But I do think that Andy has already answered that question, and that he has identified, based on the savings from the- based on the savings from the code enforcement contract, that it's more, will more than cover these increases. So, it's, we're not talking about a millage increase, we're talking about funds that have already been identified, and more than, more than just identified to get us through the end of this year, this would have been at a recurring cost every year, so, so it's a valid, it's a, to me, it's a very valid source to fund these increases without a millage increase.
But has he found me a, a, a increase for my fire contract that's coming up every year? It's not there. You know, that's what I'm talking about, see, we got things that are written into four- and five-year contracts that we can't get away from. Now, this is something, unfortunately, we can get away from, it's gonna hurt us to a point, but until somebody can come to me and give me some more, I know I've seen a little bit here, a little bit there, but it's not gonna meet the two big things that we have to work on, and that's police and fire, and that's, that's.
If I may, Andy, the, the 62,000 that we're saving on the code contract, which is an, that's a recurring annual expense, is that encumbered in any way? Have we spent that or done anything with it, or?
That has, has not been reallocated anywhere else, and that's anticipated about $62,000 this year, yes.
Okay.
It's been talked about to use in different places, but it's not allocated.
But never been actually been allocated.
How many years is that contract good for, for code enforcement? Robert, how long is your contract good for?
If I, if I may, the, the contract, the amount that was saved was renegotiated within this year, rolling forward, it would be at the, certainly at the lower amount, not at the higher amount of what we had been paying for code compliance. So, the contract, the contract renews, but the new year will be, will be at the lower rate.
Right, but at the lower rate, but what I'm getting at is, how many years is Robert's contract in play for that savings going forward?
I, I would have to defer to Robert if he's aware of that, I, I don't know the answer to that question as I sit here.
Apologize, Robert.
Good evening.
Good evening. I wish it would be for 20 years, but it's only until 2015, sir.
2015.
Okay, thanks, Robert. By the way, you're doing a great job.
Obviously, then, subject to renewal, there.
So, so basically, we have, we have the funds for, to allocate.
For his recommendations.
We do, the.
Within the recommendation.
In order to reallocate funds to meet those recommendations, yes, we do, without dipping into the general fund, without taking away from anything else.
Okay, but this, but that, but that money isn't gonna pay for the, any increase in the fire and the police and the, and the what?
No, no.
Because I'm hearing, I'm hearing what, what Councilman Fitz Kelly is saying, but I'm wondering if we need to compartmentalize this, fire being treated separately from staff, staff being treated separately from police, landscaping being treated separately, in other words, there's standalone things that we need to address as a governing body, and that's kind of how I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it as a compartmentalized thing, because I don't think we should penalize the staff because the fire contract's going up, it's gonna cost us more for.
Millage rate.
Or the, you know, there are other avenues for that, I don't think that should be the, the metrics that we use, you know, for that, until we, we don't even know what the new numbers are, even if they are going up, I suspect they are, but we don't know that for fact right now. And we're looking at different things, and another thing I'd like to do, and I'm hearing it out there, is I'd like to, I'd love to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that, absolutely.
Will you show Councilmember comments?
We're administrative comments.
Administrative comments.
We haven't got to the agenda yet.
Yeah, right, that's all right, we got all night.
Any, any other feedback, 'cause I was gonna open up to the, all right, so we are in the middle of administrative comments, Andy, you want to?
Yeah, if I, if I may, Vice Mayor, thank you, there's just, I, I want to go back to Councilmember McKay's comment about the contribution on, on the employee health insurance, and, and raising it from 50 to 75%. When I was a business owner, I provided health insurance, I paid 50%. I understand exactly what you're saying, but I did that, the context I did it in was my competition didn't offer health insurance at all. So, 50% positioned me well within that marketplace, made it easier for me to hire people, it made it easier for me to keep people, and, and now we change hats to municipality, us at 50% is, is, is a negative. The vast majority of other municipalities, and I heard your comment about the sizes of those, but that's the competitive marketplace we're in here, and, and the vast majority of those municipalities pay 100%, across the board, it's just unquestioned, 100% for employee. My, my recommendation, my suggestion to you is that we go from 50 to 75%. And, and we only have a handful.